Are you good? Excellent. Welcome to the February 26th, 2018. I think it's almost March already. Hadley School Committee meeting. Let's see, right off the bat, well, first of all, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Do I have a motion?
So.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Meeting has been called to order. We do have a change to the agenda in that we're going to do executive session after we're done with the agenda and then reconvene after exec session to come back into open session for the documentation of a vote. So, we'll do that after. And then moving on to adjustments to the agenda, the other adjustment we have is for item number seven, which is Chris's, the Business Manager Report. We'd like to add the pre-K tuition as an item on that. Are there any other adjustments to the agenda? Okay. Great. Then we'll move into presentations and discussion items. Ms. Musso, field trip proposal.
Hi.
Hey.
Did you guys have time to look at any information?
Oh, fabulous.
Fabulous. Okay. So, this trip is the one that I ran in 2015 also with the History Department. It's the England-Ireland trip and then there's the extension to Paris. So, as you know, I run the international travel usually every two years. This current trip that I'm going on in the school is actually back-to-back years because the French teacher, Ms. Lynch, was interested in doing some travel. So, the next one I'm looking to do would be two years from now, which helps to give students and parents time to save money, sometimes students work in the summer or make a little to help pay for the trip or spending money. And the selection of this trip is based on both the English and the history curriculum that aligns the best. And the trip was really successful in terms of students' enjoyment and the feedback from them and their parents, so I thought it would be a good one to run again. Having been on it also, I now know some of the particulars and how they align even more with both the history and the English curriculum. And we will be offering Honors Brit Lit next year, which also ties in well, so students who take it next year will then also have the opportunity to run the trip following year, even if they don't take it, that's okay, doesn't matter. But it might kind of align well for students who have those interests. So, it is 3,600, but again, it goes over two years, so that makes the cost a little bit more manageable. And as usual, it's the same company, you have tours, and so it includes transportation, dinner, breakfast, most of the places that we go on the itinerary and the hotels. So, it's lunch and spending money and then getting from here to the airport and back as well. So, we are looking to have it approved so that I can hold an informational parent meeting and start sharing some of that information to hopefully get parents and students signed up before the end of the school year.
A quick question. You referenced you were hoping to get at least 12 students.
Yes.
Does the price adjust at all depending on the number of students from here? Or is it really a fixed?
Yeah, it's fixed. Sometimes, every once in a while, they'll do like a discount sale or something, it would be 99 or 100 off, and so if someone's already enrolled, that money comes off of their enrollment as well. But they'll do like, you know, sale periods, if you sign up by now, it's $200, and so that can get more people signed up. But the initial current one is just the standard price. So, no, it doesn't affect that, it just makes it something more fun for the kids and better. And I would love to go back, you know, to my first trip, which had 25 kids, that was great. I would love to have a bigger group, but the last two have been closer to 12. Last two was only six students, so it was just me and the six students. This trip, we have 11 students, maybe 12.
Okay. Any other questions?
I think I quickly scanned it and saw that there, Paris was a maybe. What are the factors that determine whether or not you could go to Paris?
Yeah. So, the extension, we requested, and the original price includes it. We have had extensions canceled before if another group isn't going on. So, there's a couple options. If another group that we're traveling with, because you travel with other groups to fill the bus and all that, if they don't go, the extension can either be canceled, or sometimes, if it's still possible, you can pay an extra price and it can continue. So, that actually happened when we did this trip in 2015. That other group was not doing the Paris extension, and so we had the option to cancel or to pay an extra $100 to go still. So, the parents all agreed to pay the extra $100 to go. They felt like that was worth it. So, we did that. But you can also cancel, and then you get the money back for the amount of the extension. So, when we went to Italy and Greece, they were supposed to be cruised around the Greek Islands. Nobody else was doing that, that one got canceled, the kids got their money back. So, you don't usually find out for sure about the extension until about a couple months before you depart, to kind of go along with that the whole time, and then you wait and see, and you get your money back if they cancel it.
Okay.
It's exciting. It sounds great. I'm just curious, what have you learned? What lessons have you learned about how to do these? Because you seem very experienced with it.
Yeah.
She's actually a travel agent.
Teachings aside, yeah?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they've been good. I think that, you know, for me, safety is always the number one priority. It can be a little more challenging in countries where students speak English, because they tend to feel more comfortable and they don't want you to sort of shelter them as much. But they need that sort of continual attention, so communication is really important. I do now, I do free parent meetings before we depart, parent and student meetings, and at each one, we review some of the protocols, as well as the places that we're going, some skills they need, like reading the metro map in Paris, so that they're prepared. We talk about the things that they need to bring or don't need to bring on the trip. So, the longer that I've done them, there's sort of small things like that that have become more helpful. I understand how it works with the tour director, so making sure to talk to the kids about some extras that they want to do, like on this upcoming trip. In April, we have a lot of extra time in London, so making sure that you always plan very clearly what you're doing with that extra or free time, which is never really just free, they don't just run loose in London. But we'll talk to them about, you know, do you want to go up the London Eye? Okay, great, there's eight people that do, the rest of us don't, we're going to go over here while you go up the Eye. And so, having all of that as much as you can ahead of time helps the trip go more smoothly, helps people in terms of budgeting, and then even sort of, you know, learning about some of the differences in traveling in other countries. Heathrow is real strict about their fluid ounces and things of that nature. We've been held up there before, when the kids didn't really believe that they would be as strict and thought it was more like America. So, you know, you look at the small things and you try and warn against them as much as you can, and it helps the kids to learn what it's like to be in this other place. There's a little bit more in terms of police force out in some of the countries. When we went to Italy last time, they had their military officers out, similar to the way that you see in Paris, but that hadn't really done a thing before in Roman Florence. So, you get kind of used to some of that, and you talk to the kids about why they're there and what that means. And, yeah, so it's a lot of different things during travel.
Sounds great. Does that make a motion to support the trip?
Just second motion. Right? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I think I'm supposed to keep, do you want me to keep standing?
Yeah. So, you're on that topic again. So, the Gender Equity Task Force update on social norms campaign.
Yeah. So, I don't know, because I wasn't here, sorry. The last one, I know we're Dr. Mackenzie shared a little bit, so if I repeat too much, just feel free to let me know. Since the last meeting, we held our reveal at the name on the 20th, and that was really fun, so that's where we had the kids all come out on the court. I don't know if any of you were there, you could go. And they unveiled three of the photos. After that unveiling, we've been releasing the images on social media on the Student Council Instagram account. We release those every once in a while, and then in between, we also release some extra ones. So, there may be images of a famous celebrity supporting gender equity. And then, kind of the challenging part about that is coming up with the statements to go along with the images, because we thought about, hey, we have all these images and we're going to release all these. But of course, when you post something, especially on Instagram, you're supposed to add words to that. So, I've been working with the kids a lot on that, and we talk about those together before those get posted. And then I've been keeping an eye on the pictures, because I know we talked about making sure that there wasn't any negative or harmful feedback on those. And we've been trying to sort of create more of a conversation with them. That part isn't going, you know, as well as we would like, I think, in terms of people responding, but the kids might not know what to say all the time. So, we do try and model, myself and one of the other kids in the group will often comment and add something to that. A lot of kids like the images. We have another one that should be going out tomorrow. And then, from there, we have a meeting tomorrow at lunch, actually, to talk about a series of conversations that we want to have around gender equity. So, I met with Dr. Mackenzie, and we talked about having a first talk with the faculty leading small student groups, where students would select their discussion leader based on their gender. So, we won't assign students by gender, but students can select based on gender to try and have more gender-similar conversations. Because some of the feedback that we got from the campaign has been positive and some has been negative. As we expect, if it was all positive, we wouldn't lead a campaign. And so, some of that, I think, comes from a lack of understanding and education around men's issues regarding sexism as well. And so, we thought having those conversations with someone of the same gender might be helpful to talk about, you know, how are you feeling, what's concerning you? And then, after those conversations, have a series of student-led workshops where they'll have different topics, and the students will run those ones, and students can choose to be in certain ones. And then, the final conversation would be one where we talk about what gender equity would look like and what we want it to look like, which would lead into our social norms campaign. And so, that's how we would end the year, with the social norms campaign. So, that's kind of where we're going from here. So, March and April are the places where we are having the small group conversations, and then the social norms campaign would be May and June, somewhere in there. Do you have any questions about any of that or anything else?
Do you have a sense of what percentage of the student body has an awareness about the campaign, about the initiative in general? Are they looking forward to these things coming out? Or at least, regardless of whether they're pro or con, like what level of awareness do you think we have?
I'm going to say that I think they are relatively aware, but I can't quantify it. I know that after the reveal and when the pictures went up in the halls, because they're in the halls now, the middle school students had a lot of conversations with their teachers, so they visibly saw it. I think a lot of the high school conversations have been between the kids, and so a lot of what I know about that is from what's reported to me rather than a lot of dialogue in the classroom. So, I know it would be helpful to have a better idea as to how much. So, maybe even that first meeting where they're talking will give us a better idea as to if people understand what it's about and what it's for and, you know, what's happening and their thoughts on that. Because I don't have a total sense, especially at the high school level. But I think people are aware. I'm not sure that everybody always understands the intent, just like not everybody always understands, you know, what feminism's about. So, I think it might kind of be similar to that.
You see, you've gotten both negative and positive feedback on the campaign so far. How are you guys using the negative feedback to change your, change how the campaign's going?
Yeah. So, in a couple ways. First, the kids that shared that some of their peers weren't as supportive or felt like some of the statements or situations were made up and that they couldn't have happened to them. We talked at a lunch meeting about how any feedback, whether good or bad, can still start a conversation, and how instead of being upset about that, they should try and have a conversation with their peer about how this thing did happen to them and how, you know, it was something that was hurtful to them, and trying to have more of a conversation about it rather than an argument. So, we talked a little bit about that, and then I would also say it's informing some of the focus of our talks. So, you know, one of the proposed, or a couple of the proposed topics that I'm going to share with the kids for the second set of meetings has to do with issues for men, like, you know, like toxic masculinity or the number of male students who are diagnosed with ADD or ADHD. So, there's a lot of things that they don't even know that are issues for them, because I think a lot, not a lot, but some of the boys feel like it's just about the female students, and it's not, it's about all students. And so, that's to your point about a full understanding of the campaign. We didn't get as many then as we could to participate in the photo shoot, but it was only three, so that makes it a little bit harder as well. So, we're trying to use some of that feedback to inform those conversations, but also to help teach the kids how to respond in those conversations instead of just being defensive about it, but to use that as a place where they can have a conversation about it.
Great. Thank you.
Great. Thanks for sharing.
No problem. Other questions, feel free to email me at any time.
That's great. Thank you.
Okay. Next, marketing, Hadley Public Schools. Mr. Simmons?
Okay. Thanks for your time, guys. So, I'm not sure how much of this subject, do you guys have any background pertaining to student enrollment, the competitive nature of the schools?
We talk about it almost every meeting.
And they happen to have their school committee packet, all the tours and charges.
So, you're probably more well-schooled about it than myself. So, I work here, and I'm also a Hadley resident and a taxpayer, so I have several interests. And whether we want it or not, we are thrust into a competitive environment pertaining attracting students to our school and other schools attracting our students to their schools. So, we had a meeting, Dr. Mackenzie called a meeting for interested teachers, and we basically talked about a two-pronged approach, one being what can we do to improve the marketability of our school, talking about different kinds of certificate programs and whatnot. And I took a different approach in that we have a lot to market already, and we just are not marketing. So, I just, I made like two sample ads. Dr. Mackenzie and I spoke about using maybe the Gazette as a possible medium for putting them out there, because that's where I happen to see ads for other schools all the time. And so, here was one ad, and these are just sample ads, so we wouldn't have to go any like this. But, so, one thing our school has that I feel other schools do not have is a business program in the high school. And we're the only school that I know of that now requires personal finance for kids to graduate. So, I feel, you know, that's something that we can market that we have. So, I listed a bunch of things that I cover in those classes, and hopefully some students and some parents would see that and be interested and have their kid shadow here and then see all the other awesome things we offer. So, this was, this ad was marketing towards your ninth through 12th grader, this kind of ad. And we could do all kinds of ads, this is just something that I could speak about, because it's classes that I teach and I go over. And then, I mean, another ad, this is where we lose a lot of kiddos, is going from sixth grade to seventh grade to the middle school, we lose a bunch of students. So, one thing that we offer here that a lot of other schools don't is a middle school technology program. And we have awesome equipment, the districts and helping carts and trustees are all super generous in giving us lots of supplies. So, we have a total modern robotics program now. I've integrated it with 3D printers in the library, so the kids are designing custom parts to their robots. And then, I still teach a couple different basic programming classes, some web design, those kinds of things. So, this, this ad is targeted for seventh and eighth graders, and this is a very popular class. Kids like it, a lot of hands-on stuff, a lot of creative-type stuff. And if it came to the point where we needed to have more sections open because of the class, my schedule is pretty easy to manipulate so that it wouldn't be too hard to offer more of those classes. So, yeah, so this is where, these are two, two places I felt we could target without really changing anything, just to promote how awesome our school is. So, yeah, so, any questions about that?
Yeah, I like the approach. We've been talking about some of the value add that we've added into the curriculum recently that we wanted to, you know, showcase.
Definitely. These two are definitely differentiators, and there are more, there are more differentiators here at Hopkins, but these two are especially valuable and marketable. And we could experiment with what a Gazette ad looks like. I think in parallel, it would be great to have things that we could circulate on social media that are small, like smaller versions or shareable versions of these kinds of ads. And a campaign around these two subjects in particular would be a draw.
Yeah, that's a great idea. We talked about, so, one place we could market this immediately to are the sixth-grade parents, because some of them might be thinking about, you know, that's the time to send their kids to another school.
To the stretch fifth.
They start at the fifth, yeah. So, that could be a good place to go. And return on investment, just, you know, one student staying, you already have a good return on investment. And, you know, as educators, I'll speak for my fellow teachers, we're typically not used to the competitive environment. You know, we go to education school, we have that kind of stuff. So, a lot of us are not used to the coming pressures that are going to come to the area of schools, you know, with the charter schools and Chinese immersion school and the tech schools, they all have great things to offer. We have great things to offer too, so I would just like to market those things.
I think one of the connections we've made, and you've mentioned it, being a Hadley resident, is that every year, we're approving school choice seats, and our goal is that every seat is able to be filled. And if this is, you know, something that helps motivate somebody to be able to, oh, they have that too, and that's of importance to them, I want to shadow somebody and see this, and it's not just, you know, a certain niche that they might think that we're part of, then I think that's only going to help us, you know, get somebody perhaps seeing a side of Hopkins that they didn't realize was an emphasis and something that we're proud of.
Yeah, absolutely.
An idea, and then, well, an idea. I don't know if we offer any summer programming at all, or whether faculty have any interest in doing it. It's probably case by case. But if there was, I know parents are always looking for things for their kids to do this summer. At this high school age bracket, I'm sure it's different, many kids work, many don't. But looking at the $1,000 Minecraft camps that Amherst College offers, or very cost-prohibitive camps, those fill up within, you know, a couple weeks' time. And so, when you have parents who are looking for things that differentiate their kids' education, and even if you offered something that was super manageable, like 12 seats, just the awareness that would spread, even if it was like 12 kids, two weeks, at a pretty handsome rate, and the awareness that would spread about Hopkins having this capability would be huge.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
The library's done something in past summers, like a coding camp, but I think it was, as you said, it was a small scale, but I don't know that there was any connection necessarily to, oh, and by the way, if you come to Hopkins as a middle schooler, you know, there's only more, you know? But I agree, that that might be also a good, we've been looking at ways to connect with the new, you know, facilities and excitement around the library and the senior center. This may be another connection as far as a summer opportunity goes.
Yeah, we can, we always need to keep improving and enriching the curriculum we have to offer. And so, you know, as an educator, I plan on doing that. But at the same time, this is something that we don't do at all, as far as like let people know what we're doing here. Yeah, so.
So, I see two audiences, right? There's that internal audience, right? We do lose, we have quite an attrition from eight to nine as well, right? Kids going to Smithville.
We do. That is, is going to be a tough thing to compete against realistically. I'm not opposed to trying it, but that, that's going to be tough to compete against that tech track.
Right. I would agree with that again also, not that I'm opposed to that, but if we could really stop, if we could stop the lead around choice, of course, and still maintain our benefit, we would be in really good shape. And the reason it's hard to compete against that tech track is that often children choose that. Chapter 74 education is not just a shock, I mean, it's a, it's a whole different animal. You need a whole different teaching certification to be there, you have a separate superintendent license to be the superintendent of a Volk Tech school, it's a whole different animal. So, sometimes students say, I'm doing this because I want to, I want to be apprenticed into a trade, exit high school and be ready to start my business. Some of the students who get A-plus certification, some of our students where I used to work, they exited LPVEC, they were picked up immediately at the age of 18 for jobs in computer science, and their employers were paying for their bachelor's degrees, and they were starting at a pretty high rate. But that's, that's why sometimes, again, not that we're opposed to it, but if we could just, when students are choosing another public school.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm sure that they know what's available to them in that fifth grade, even, you know, I agree with you, Mira, starting at that fifth grade, so they really truly know what options they have, so they're not losing a student for something that we offer here.
Exactly.
And to springboard on the business idea, we have a fair amount of students that take these classes and go on to major in business, I think, in college. A recent student of mine just got accepted to Eisenberg, so, you know, it's possible we could seek out some kind of partnership and use that to both promote that program in the school, and parents will see that.
Summer internships in business.
Thinking about these audiences, I'm just, I'm wondering if this ad campaign could benefit from maybe having some of those students that are in the, that are in the seventh and eighth grades, like design, those young, like design that ad that's targeted towards those kids and their parents, and maybe the older kids, that like once, once you have testimonials and stuff like that, like have it, really have that personal touch on it, just think of these different audiences, kind of stuff that might attract them.
Yeah, it's a good, so, I like your idea, and I tried to do a competition in one of my classes for making ads, and my first attempt at it was not as successful as I imagined it would be. I tried again.
Too tough.
But, but related to that, though, one thing that could help is some kind of documentary about what goes on in the class, that the ad is linked onto YouTube, that kind of thing. Once, you know, we'd have to obviously get people permission, etc., etc., but that could be some way that would have like a testimonial, but it'd be more of a, like.
I like that idea.
I do. That's great.
I like that idea, because these are role models of theirs that they remember from elementary school. And our school is small enough that these are recognizable people, so it could work really well.
So, I like the idea of the campaign, and there's, there's that internal audience, as a parent, helping understand what the difference is between sixth and seventh grade is important. I don't think I fully understand that, I'm not sure, I guess, still do, and I've had kids that are going through that. I think we need to explain a little bit about what Hopkins is a little bit too, and I know I work with people and they don't know that Hopkins is the high school in seventh grade for Hadley, they don't understand.
Some private schools.
It's a private school, exactly. I think we also, I think, I love that you're highlighting some of these key things. I mean, I like that term differentiator. There's also a lot of things, you know, our student-to-teacher ratio, there's great sports, there's those kinds of things that I think are hard to find around here for the number of students we have.
And there's also the testimony of, and Mr. Simmons knows this well, because a pretty significant number of students will come back and visit him. The testimony of alumni who come back feeling like college is so easy to them because of the level of preparation that they have. And I know Dr. Mackenzie had shown some data on the success rates of Hopkins graduates, you know, being able to put something together where we could get, you know, some statements or testimony to that effect from some alumni who come back and speak with pride about the fact that they're really successful in college and what they're doing with their career.
So, that kind of thing, we're a public college preparatory, right? As opposed to, you know, we might not have the niche of a VoC or a Chinese immersion, but we're not, so I was just looking at the numbers of who goes where, right? So, mainly our folks in Hadley, if they go to a non-HES school, they go to the Chinese school, or they go to PBPA, right?
For charters. And then, remember the choice. And then remember the choice which we have in here.
Amherst and Northampton.
Yeah.
So Amherst is the biggest receiver.
Amherst is, yes.
So, right, are we not going to outcompete those kids necessarily? Because they might be, if you go to PBPA or Chinese school, you have a specific intent. Some may stay. Where are the other folks in the region, I think, is, that might like the college preparatory public school, small classroom size setting that we have, right? So it's, it's about retention, but it's also about educating others.
And I'm convinced if we can get them to come in, in shadow, I'm convinced that the school will sell, will sell itself.
Right.
So specifically, what we're looking to do pretty immediately, to use these ads in the Gazette to test that out, to coordinate something with sixth grade parents, with HES parents, inviting them, organize some sort of direct marketing to them. If you want to be here, it's, it's hard to get people out sometimes. We could probably talk about the best way, but marketing directly to the upper elementary. I'm working on letters right now for every, Mr. Beck meets with every single parent who comes to, of a student who comes to Hopkins. So you see, we have 13 queries right now of school choice for Hopkins right now for next year. But we're also able to, in many cases, send out letters. So I'm working on a letter for parents who write now, families who may be attending other schools, with the very information you're talking about. I'll include in the letter, these ads, the size that you have, but also the letter includes, here's what's unique about elementary, our average class size across the district is 15, what that allows for, that we have full-time music, we have full-time arts, we have the opportunity to study an instrument beginning in grade three, right?
Four.
Three. So some of the things that you're talking about, athletics and extracurriculars, in that letter. Not too long that people don't read it, and so that would go to everybody. And then perhaps asking folks on the school committee who have access to the Friends of Hadley page, that social media platform, if they would be amenable to getting some of that information out.
So another idea, first, that saying, if Muhammad doesn't go to Mount, and Mount comes to Muhammad. You are a rock star teacher. If you went to the elementary school and did a guest, you know, guest appearance with Mrs. T at her space, or maybe right in the classroom, and you showed off to the fifth and sixth graders some new awesome thing that they don't have at the elementary school, little bits, or bring your three D printer, I don't know what they don't have that you do, but something that shows just how amazing it is, and then you leave behind a thing, a flyer, that they, that I would like to take.
I like, I like that idea. So this year, the elective teachers are planning on visiting the elementary school for that whole process of Step Up Day when the kids come next time. So I'll, I'll make sure to, to bring something that will.
Make it hands-on. Make it engaging. Make it like a sample, a little taste of what they would get if they were in your classroom.
Just rather than one, 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 one. Make it.
If you could wear that sumo suit.
Yeah.
That sells, yeah.
So also, and I, I think the kids these days are just so much more aware of the world in general, and aware of the opportunities, but with the same token, making sure that while these classes are really cool, but what can they do when they get out of school? Like really, like what are their options available to them? Because somebody who goes to school to become an electrical engineer, I mean, you can do so many different things. And giving them a real life example, a specific example, or multiple examples of just what they could do. They could be working, you know, well, anything, I can't think of any examples right now, but really bringing it home for like, if you take a class in my robotics, you know, here are some opportunities available to you. You could go to school here, but what does that mean? Like, you know, it's great to have a great class, and it's great to have this, but what can you do with your life? Finding something that excites them when they get older. And it sounds like you would be able to, you're smart enough to, I'm just saying, giving that real example, so that they can, something really sparks. They're, yeah, relatable, and like, wow, I really would love to be able to, you know, build an airplane. I mean, it's not out of their reach. Plenty of kids who've graduated from Hopkins that are doing really amazing things with their lives.
Yes, and for the student who's like, oh, that's not for me, saying, this is increasingly a technology-driven world, you're going to need to know how to work with people like that in my class, you will work with all types and you will make yourself competitive for that world.
Do we have an open house for prospective students?
No, we just do Step Up Day. I mean, when students contact the school, they get a shadow.
We invite those families to both participate, and we've had, over the last four years, a pretty significant number of families who have participated in the end of this school year parent meeting in transition, have participated for sixth to seventh grade specifically. But then we invite all prospective school choice families to participate in Step Up Day well in advance. And it's a rough estimate, but I would say probably 75% of those families participate in the Step Up Day, so that the student can get a copy of what their schedule would look like, and they go through even before the year begins. So Step Up Day has been easier to get students to participate, because we don't necessarily do prospective programming for incoming families at other grades other than the transition point of six to seven.
Another suggestion is even before Step Up Day, perhaps to establish an ongoing report, if the students have projects that they're completing, maybe two or three projects throughout the semester or the year, that maybe they're bussed over and they do a showcase in the auditorium, and like the elementary school students love every opportunity they can get to get into the cafeteria, and the World Cafe Day, or Immigration Day, or whatever, having it be more, I don't know, show and tell.
So we have, we did bring the, which band went down there last year? Do you remember, Brian?
Jess.
We reinstated that.
Wonderful.
The students go, and to your point, the elementary kids loved it, right? Absolutely loved going in and watching the high schools and middle schoolers perform. So certainly, if there's a way to get students down there, you're right. To play backup to SER, perhaps. Maybe many, maybe a whole army of sumo wrestlers.
Well, yeah, we have two of those suits.
But I want to say how grateful I am for you as an educator to really care about this issue and take the initiative to design materials that maybe draft one, but at least it gives us something to think about and take action on. I encourage us to take action, measure, is it working, are we getting more calls, and redirect as needed. We have no shortage of ideas and desire to support you, so.
I would agree. I think we've batted around some ideas in the past. We've not really been able to necessarily, you know, pull the trigger and get started on some of these things. And, you know, we talked about social media platform a couple meetings ago, and, you know, trying to get some of that off the ground without going hog wild and, you know, having too many things out there. The idea of, you know, these types of information sharing, the idea of testimonials from graduates who, you know, they don't have to come in here, and you could video them talking about, you know, why Hopkins and what it's done for me, what it's offered to me now that I'm in the working world, or I'm in college and succeeding. All of those things digitally, you can make those available, and they all become great tools for, you know, marketing, I know, and selling is kind of a harsh word, but you're trying to share this opportunity with as many people as we can.
Yeah. We can just try to throw tons of things, and we're not sure what works, but maybe.
And you've isolated, I think you've picked up on some things that are key, you know, highlights that we, that we should be putting out there, and especially strategically, like you said, where we're losing, you know, some grade levels.
So, so going forward, what I would like to do is think about putting, they don't necessarily have to be these ads, we can change any of it. I have them in layered format, so they're easy to, to change. And if you guys have any, any other ideas of different kinds of ads too, I'd be happy to work on designing that. And I can even run it, another test to see if I can get the kiddos to make some stuff to put out there.
The board could be wearing the sumo suit with you. There's only.
That's a good one. Yeah, I like that idea. So I'd like to, I'd like to go forward with starting to put something in the paper, just to see if we can get anything. I'd like to go forward with marketing this kind of stuff to our fifth and sixth grade parents. And I'd like to go forward with starting to put together some kind of commercial promoting the school. And I'd also, I'll start to plan a hands-on demonstration for when we go over there for the shadowing. I have some ideas, I work with the robots, and there's a battle bot unit where, of course, they love destroying things and this and that, so.
Can you let me know when that happens? So.
Well, if there's no questions, are we, do we need a vote on this?
No.
Are there any more questions? I'm hearing we're generally supportive of it. Yes, excited to see, excited to be out there.
Yeah, and like I said, any, if you guys have any suggestions about the ads or any of that kind of stuff, please feel free to shoot me an email, because the, you know, zero cost to change it graphically and all that kind of stuff. Well, thanks a lot for your time.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
That's great.
Hey, see you tomorrow. Thanks.
That's exciting. Okay, Screenagers Viewing, Hopkins Academy.
So this, it has been in the weekly email a few times, so I'll bring it, put it back in the weekly, weekly email. Hopkins Academy will do it, screening, Screenagers, so a documentary about the effect of screen time on young people. It comes with, and how young people are interacting with screens, it comes with teaching resources, and Hopkins has scheduled it, our goal is that it will stream into every classroom, teachers will get resources to lead the discussion about Screenagers. The students at Hopkins will do that on March 30th, and then there'll be a community screening. We split the cost with Granby Public Schools, so there'll be a, a community screening on March 28th. And that will probably happen in Granby, and I will be giving people, families lots of information about it. And there'll be a discussion after the community screening for parents and community members.
Great.
They're going to be able to watch it on their iPad? Spot up on the phone.
It's definitely getting a lot more press and attention these days than some of, today show is doing a, a special series on that this week, on screen time for teenagers and the effects that it has on their learning, on their attention span, on their social skills.
On their parents.
On their parents. On having a conversation with somebody and making eye contact, like all of that, so.
So Humira sent a really interesting article about something that has been tested in some public schools, that allows children to put their phones away and not have access to their phones all day long. And I shared it with the Hopkins faculty, and it sparked a really interesting conversation. Great comments thread, they're still coming in right now.
Great, yeah. It enables students to lock their phone and put it away for the day and have maybe meaningful screenless conversation. It doesn't eliminate the need for like using computers on wheels and the kinds of things that we would give them, but it would, it would really force them to have conversation and interaction. And I think that's increasingly a lost art.
Yeah, just sparked, I will update you on that conversation.
So is that something you're considering?
Well, I put it out to the faculty and said, what, you would be shocked to hear that when I read it, I said, fantastic, I love it. Let's do it tomorrow. And so then I sent it out to all of the Hopkins faculty and staff, and there are, people have asked some really good questions conceptually. I think everybody has said conceptually, absolutely on board, don't want to see young people interacting as often as they are with their phones. There are some folks who have said, well, at what point are we teaching them responsible use of the devices? Or is this really what we should be doing? Shouldn't they be using them responsibly? And, and then some very good practical questions. What if a student doesn't want to give up their phone? What if one teacher said to me, there's, there are students in, in schools sometimes who will have almost like a, what do you, what do you call this? What do they call the burn phone or something? Not a real, like a.
Burner phone? Because they're secret agents?
Well, no, because if a teacher says, give me your phone, that's the phone they give. You give them the fake phone. So that this degree that was, you know, so there was a good discussion about, is this really what we want to do? Of course, I want to do it, but that's not shocking, so there's.
And you know, historically, I haven't wanted to do it.
Yes, which is why I was ready to sneeze at the drawing.
Well, I, I found that article interesting and noticed my framing of that. What I asked you to think about was, what would it look like to do a little experiment, to conduct a pilot, to perhaps lease those pouches, test them, ask the company to give us some loaner pouches and try it, and be more intentional about initiating the interaction that we want to see? Because I'm not convinced that without them, there would be more interaction necessarily. So how might we do a more intentional test that gets the outcomes that we think could happen? And to see if it's right for us. So no, like long-term commitment per se.
And maybe then there's the opportunity for students who were interested to, to test out life without a phone for a day at school, or something like that. No surprise that the words little experiment and pilot completely like, they went right by me. Humira, I didn't even see her in her email. She's coming in now. She's come over to my side.
Well, I mean.
Faculty, get on board.
Therein, you might have, you know, less resistance from all, everyone, if it's just a little experiment, and it gets better outcomes. If it doesn't, then maybe we shouldn't invest in it. So.
I also think you, you can't, you can't avoid the reality in these, this day and age, especially like the last meet and everything like that, you're going to have a lot of parents that are going to be like, I want my kid to be able to have their phone.
Teachers will set, will tell you, will tell us that the number one, I mean, certainly in a situation like that, obviously, you want in a major catastrophe, we want parents to be able to contact children. The, the reality is that teachers will say that the number one interrupter is students saying, can I go out in the hallway? I need to text my parent back. That's parents texting during the day. That's, that's number one.
And then second is probably texting the kid that's in the class, right in there with them.
Fold up the notes and just flip them.
That's modern day flipping.
Right, exactly. Old school texting.
Kids are very environmentally conscious and they don't want to waste the paper.
Nope. Exactly right.
Okay, so we will look forward to Screenagers. Hopkins Academy Program of Studies, Mr. Beck.
So it's not as substantive a list of changes. There are no changes in graduation requirements or anything like that. It's largely just edits to bring, we changed, switched over to a new student information system last year, and with that, at the same time, the state also changed or made adaptations to their course leveling structure. So we just made sure we had alignment. There were a couple of places where I needed to make sure that elective courses were tabbed as O2, which is an indication that they're at the college prep level, because O1 for the state is effectively remedial courses or courses that are unleveled, like a study skills course or something like that, where there isn't a curriculum in advance. There are a couple of additional courses that are suggested. AP World History, I think, will be the 11th advanced placement course that we'll have in our program of studies, if I'm not mistaken. So for a school our size from eight years ago, we went from offering four advanced placement courses, and I think it really testifies to the dedication of our faculty, the interest of our students and families, and the change in our, in the updating really by Ms. Cullinan of our guidance program to reflect what colleges really look for, which is more challenging coursework. And that being the top criteria that they look for. I think teachers did a phenomenal job of looking through and making some minor modifications to things, making a couple of recommendations for new courses. And then in science, just adding some language to their course descriptions for Science Seven and Science Eight, which used to be Bioscience Seven and Physical Science Eight, where they were focused in those particulars, subfields of science. They're now Biology, Chemistry, and Physics, as well as Environmental Science, are woven through the curriculum up in through the middle school years before courses become discreet at the high school level. So those course descriptions needed to change, and that's a result of the work that was done by the Science Department and those teachers from the elementary school from grades, I believe, grades four on up to vertically align the science curriculum. And so, you know, very good work on their part. The curriculum is being finished for grade eight by Katie Gallagher right now, so that will be updated this year, and we should be. And we should be completed at that particular point. We'll need to write a curriculum for World History. But Mr. Burns works with the College Board and has access to not just, you know, hundreds of syllabi from across the country, but also to the curriculum, various curriculum himself. So it's something where he'll have to necessarily recreate the wheel from scratch. That's basically it. There's not a lot in there in terms of, as I said, substantive changes. It's largely just the addition of a couple of new courses, a couple of course descriptions, and just some updating to course leveling and, you know, some language to reflect our practice in graduation planning to consolidate some of the language that's in there.
Two questions. What was the name of the group that came and evaluated? Was it NEAS? Yes. Okay, so one was, I wasn't, I can't remember if we had received the results of all of them.
Okay, it will be from March 26th. The report will be for the March 26th. The March, the March School Committee meeting will have the NEAS report.
Okay. So the second part of the question is, do you anticipate in that report receiving any feedback that would impact this program of studies as to either, that would need to be implemented right away? Or is this a more longer term?
I'm just thinking of some of the questions that they asked.
Great questions, and I understand the report has already been received in-house and that you're digesting it and already taking action. So I imagine it is probably reflected in here.
I'm not sure what kind of questions you were asked per se, but so if you wanted to share those of, you know, I know that when I look through in the first edit that I do with the chair, that, you know, we received really broad credit for opening up our upper level coursework to every student in the school and to not have those arbitrary restrictions that many schools have in place that, you know, schools will say, well, you need, if a parent approves you being in, well, that doesn't serve well a student who doesn't have a strongly advocating parent or comes from a challenging socioeconomic background. So our faculty opened those courses up to everybody, and I believe they go out and actively recruit students who may even be on the cusp to say, come on, you know, join us in our AP classes. And at the same time, not teaching that course to the middle, but pulling those students up to where they need to be in terms of that level of rigor. And so we did, we received a pretty significant amount of credit for that. There was, I didn't see anything directly related to the program of studies in the course of studies itself in my review that warranted any recommendations. It had most of the recommendations in curriculum. That they would come in standard two curriculum and standard seven in providing the resources to support that curriculum. Standard seven is the place where we probably get the most commendations. And in standard two, we know that we just, we need to get our academic expectations, school-wide academic expectations wrapped up and integrated into our curriculum templates. And so it has more to do with the way that the curriculum documents themselves are used by the teachers and by us in terms of our analysis than it does the program of studies itself, so.
That's helpful to know because I think I was mixing the two as a, you know, did they identify, oh, this is a gap as opposed to this is how we'd like to see you implement it within the curriculum?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and I'm not sure again what, what questions they ask. Obviously, the teams come from all over the place and every team has a different tenor in terms of coming in.
Well, they asked a broad range that was, you know, dependent on their area of oversight within that group.
Yep, and they probably stuck largely to the writing guides as well.
Yeah, they did. But I was also just thinking about the students and how well, you know, they talked about their experiences and whether there was any, you know, outcome from that that is directly related to the program of study. Like, we don't have this program, or we do have this program, and whether we were kind of thinking of needing to emphasize something add something or shift based on that.
Yeah, I didn't see anything in there that indicated that we had any kind of substantial gaps in what it is that we offer for courses for students. And I think part of that probably has to do with the fact that we broadly supplement with Virtual High School in areas of interest and, you know, not being able to offer advanced placement statistics as an example or offer a course in, you know, if a student wants to take a course in the Holocaust, we make that available to juniors and seniors through Virtual High School as part of our contracting with them. So that may supplant, you know, that, you know, it provides a great supplement to what we offer in the program of studies, so.
That may be another future advertising project.
Yes.
Course of study in virtual, you know, the broad range that's available through the online courses. So this does require a motion from the school committee. Are there any other questions or feedback on the program of study? Am I getting a motion?
Motion to approve the program of study.
Seconding. All in favor?
Aye.
Approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is the earliest we've had it approved. So what, what we're hoping to be able to do is have our students and parents register for courses through the community portal. And so Jennifer Mendelson, my administrative assistant, went to training the week before the vacation. And she's gonna be training us to hopefully set that up. Worst case scenario, we'll do it as we have in the past, but we're hopeful that by the time we hit the end of March, that we're sending out communications in some directions around working at home with students. Angie Cullen has met with every graduating class of students in the school to provide them with an overview of courses that they should be looking at at their grade level, depending on what it is that they're looking to do after high school. So our, you know, fully implemented comprehensive guidance curriculum has prevented us from needing to do an entirely separate set of individual grade level meetings with students, with the exception of, of course, of the sixth grade coming in, where we'll have a couple of conversations. But we're gonna schedule that this year much earlier than we have in the past, which will be helpful.
Great, that's great news. Now, I know the use of the portal to do this is a first-time thing, but is it also a first-time thing that parents might be involved in the decision-making around?
No, that's, we've opened that up in terms of sending out the Naviance information, but that was largely contingent upon whether or not a student carried home their, or opened up their password in their email to share with their families.
They never saw anything.
Yeah, so. So in this particular case, the communication will go out to students through our email system as well as to parents through the School Brain system to say, you know, this, use your password, use your login. I'm sure we'll get a couple of inquiries from parents saying, I don't remember my login and password. So we can resend easily enough. And it doesn't require parents to go in, it just enables them to be able to go in and to be able to consult with their kids on what it is that they want their kids to register for. You know, and it becomes, you know, more important as students move up in, through the high school years, whereas in the middle school years, it's largely making some choices between some electives. But the program is, you know, we're a very heterogeneous school, which has substantial advantages in terms of getting everybody prepared for a particular level of study.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, principal search.
I had a great visit. We have two finalists for the Happy Elementary School Principal. And there was a community night today. I did a site visit to Bo Elementary. One of our finalists is the Vice Principal. And tomorrow I'll be at Plains Elementary, where one of our finalists is working as an interim building administrator. And then on Thursday, both finalists will come to Happy Elementary School. And teachers have been given the chance to sign up. And this is specifically for faculty and staff to interact with the two candidates. And we will then, also as part of the site visit process, I meet in person with a good number of the references that are included in somebody's packet in addition to other people that I asked to speak with, curriculum folks and special educators and other folks to try to get a full sense of the finalists' skills and their interaction style with different groups. So it was a great visit today. I'm looking forward to my visit tomorrow, and we're hoping to have this wrapped up next week.
That's great.
Great. Congratulations. Okay. All right, fiscal year 19, choice, charter, and vocational projection.
So embedded in all the graphs, there are some data that require a vote. That has to do with school choice slots. These are, these are questions that come up pretty routinely. You've seen them in the charter report, you've seen them in the choice report. They sometimes come out from select board, from finance committee. So I wanted you to have all the graphs and all the numbers split up a gazillion different ways. Like choice in general, choice by grade level, choice by grade, the same thing with charter. When are students leaving? Where are they going? So again, some of that information is redundant, but you, you have this and certainly you can ask me any questions that you would like. And these are data that we would also make available to finance subcommittee and to select boards when those questions come up as well. The first one shows you CTE's Career and Technical Education, Chapter 74, approved programs. And you see, we have seen this pretty substantial spike over the last two years of students electing Career and Technical, Chapter 74, education. So from 24 in FY17 to 30 in FY18. And 37 is all the information we have now. So that takes into consideration, we take out the seniors plus new applications. And as of a couple of weeks ago, right for the packet was put together, 37 was our number.
Can you explain that, just, I'm sorry, CTE enrollment within or outside of?
Outside. So CTE, Career and Technical Education, I mean Chapter 74 approved programming. So that means Smith Vocational. If Smith Vocational didn't have the program they were looking for, then it might be another Chapter 74 approved school, but that's what that is.
I have a question, just mainly because of that huge spike. Is there any follow-up with the families of the students that go to a CTE school? Would like any form of conversation or survey or anything like that, try to figure out, like, try to get it by?
Yeah, so I believe that Ms. Cullen and Brian, and Mr. Beck, you can help me with this. But when they apply, the student has to fill out an application. The application goes to the Guidance Counselor at Hopkins Academy. And then eventually it comes over to me for signature. And Ms. Cullen, the Guidance Counselor, speaks with the students about why they've selected it. And to my knowledge, you can certainly add to this, most students are pretty specific about the kind of career training that they want. So they know, I want to be a carpenter, I want to be a mechanic, I want to be, in this case, we have one of, there's only one other, I think, agricultural high school in the entire Commonwealth. There's only one other. There's not more than two, there aren't more than three in the entire Commonwealth. We might be one of two. So I want to go into animal husbandry. So they're very specific about they, what they want to do. They're required to go through exploratory, but they all have very specific career paths that they say they want to do.
And many of the students, we have an idea actually when they come in, you know, within the first couple of months that they're here in school, as we have conversations and meetings with families to get to know students and their families as they enter school, that many of the students who apply have a family influence or background that we begin to understand very early on that these are students who are looking for it early in the process as opposed to being in a situation where a kid is making a decision, you know, partway through eighth grade, maybe, I don't know. These aren't kids who are on the fence. They've made their commitment pretty early on in their educational career and it's largely family-based decision-making, so.
That is true. We have a lot of families who are generationally, folks have gone to Smith. We had a student come back this year who was in Chapter 74, and he decided he wanted to come back to Hopkins. It's unusual, but it does happen.
Yeah, I was just curious if there's any change in trends that could account for like that spike of 13, or is?
I think in general that vocational education has, has done a great job. I'd say this, I was aware of this when I was superintendent of a vogue school, that they've done a much better job of marketing vocational and technical education. So how it is talked about in public policy, how the governor talks about it, how the previous governor talked about it, has really changed over the years. Like it's, it's not how vocational education was described when I was in school or even 10 years ago, how it was described. They've done a very, very good job of marketing the fact that it is technical education.
And it isn't just marketing. It's also the sort of reflecting what the needs of the industry are around robotics and manufacturing. It's a lost art. We need to retool American society to be able to do the kinds of things that our government recognizes needs to, will stimulate the economy.
Absolutely, absolutely, Huma. I mean, a lot of these jobs are things that you'll often hear. I was lumping in marketing, but you're right, it's how, you know, the CTE has done a very good job of linking itself to market demand and the kinds of jobs that are likely to be outsourced and those that aren't. Right? So you always hear CTE people say, can't outsource a plumber, right? You also can't call the call center and say, walk me through this. Most people don't want to, right? So that's, that's some of it too.
But linking our educational opportunities to those same career opportunities is our great opportunity.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
So by the, one of the next slides, of school choice enrollment trends, 13 to 19. We're still not positive by?
We are. Of course, if you add, if you lumped in charter and choice as one bucket, that would look different. But I do purposefully, one school choice is treated completely differently than Career and Technical Education and charter schools. The numbers are different. We fill out different reports. So yes, we certainly still have more students who are choicing in versus students who are choicing out. The numbers for FY19, all that happens here is this backs out. You have nine seniors right now choicing in, so they're taken out. And you have eight seniors choicing out, and it doesn't assume any other changes. So we have had 13 queries at Hopkins. We've had additional queries at HES. We have the exact number of how many families have indicated their interest in applying for choice. So that, this is really a complete guess in FY19.
But if you're, if you're looking at these numbers and you're talking about the total amount out, including school choice and CTE, we're at a loss of 14 at least.
Oh, and then charter, yeah. So overall.
Right, where, is there one graph that has all those numbers?
No, I didn't put one-on-one graph, but I could.
So what are the different categories, I'm sorry?
Excuse me. School choice, Chapter 74, CTE, and charter. So your choice out right now in FY18 is 55. Your Smith vogue out in FY18 is 30. 55, 30, and your charter out, I think, right now is 47. Let me check that. Is it 47? Yeah, is 47.
Yeah, district total, FY18, 47.
H77.
Okay, so all of this is to lead to the review and approval of school choice seats.
Yeah, it's, what's one thing we have to do is certainly, and that's embedded in there. They all go through the recommendations for school choice seats, but it really was a response. Tara, I think last meeting, you might have had some questions very specifically about by grade, where students really go there around choice. And it is a question that can often come up, as I said, with the Select Board, with Finance Committee, and I know that you all interact with those folks too, so I wanted you to have the information about what's happening. And certainly it's information, as you can see, that the faculty has been looking at and trying to brainstorm and problem solve around what makes sense. And so we're looking, you have embedded in that right after the school choice graphs, the 2018, 2019, school choice seats available. I do want to make one correction. So nothing different with the slots available. What you would be voting is a total of 83 slots for the district in school choice with slots by grade level as indicated here. It says on your current grade enrollments, current K enrollment is 50. I think I was just having this crazy moment of wishful thinking. It's 26, but you know, a girl can dream. That's what current K is, 26. Everything else is correct on that.
So can I ask a question about?
Sure.
Grade five, is that the one that we had added a class, or is this at this point now just, it's three classes?
That was four.
Four. Okay, so what for this coming here, is that the same grade that's now moving?
It's going to become five.
Three classes, 46 total students.
Correct.
We had, we had talked about whether in adding a class, we said, we're not gonna open up any school choice slots, even though it's an average of, we're talking 15 kids per classroom.
And so the feeling of the HES? And so the feeling of the HES faculty, it's still a one-year position, because you also have three sixth grades right now, so that position won't be in the budget in FY '19, but it's a recommendation of the Hadley Elementary faculty and the administration that we don't, we still don't open school choice slots. That grade is benefiting greatly from the small class size, which is certainly something that they needed.
Sounds good. So as far as school choice seats, so we need to decide if we'll approve the 83 slots. Are there any questions about how those are allocated in terms of the HES or Hopkins?
I was just trying to figure out how they're determined by grade. Is there some formula, or is it more subjective?
It's more subjective. I mean, there is a general sense of classes, they certainly, Hadley Elementary School, one of our things that we market on is that we do have small class sizes, but really, Paul, there isn't a formula, it's looking at class composition, it's a look at student needs, and then they make recommendations based on that.
I have a question around grade two in particular. I think historically, I've observed that two is a very interesting year, where students are going from like one wing and a certain kind of education to stepping up to a whole other wing and a different kind of course of study. I noticed that we're potentially opening up six slots, I'm wondering if there's any concern about the size of those classes, and?
They're anticipating a couple of move-outs there. That was part of the reason for opening up that many seats, yeah.
So it'll be at the same number then, the same level?
It might be slightly larger. The teachers also weigh in, the administration, so Dr. Wickman doesn't do this in isolation, she speaks with the current grade-level teachers. So we're talking grade two next year, she talks with current grade one and says, what do you think makes sense? So they've weighed in, and then they anticipate, as I said, at least a couple of move-outs.
Now, in a perfect world, if we fill each slot available, like, let's say in grade two, but then as the class matriculates through, it's determined that maybe that is too many students, what is the recourse at that point?
We open up another classroom. One school choice, always school choice.
Cool, thank you.
So you can't, it's an excellent question, you can't rescind a school choice offer. And Hadley Public Schools has, since I've been here and apparently historically, if a student is a Hadley student, Hadley Public Schools has always given them the option of remaining a Hadley student. So if a family moves, we don't make them wait for the lottery, and there's, that's perfectly legal, we checked with legal counsel. So if a family moves and says, I'd like, we'd like our children to stay here, we just reclassify them as choice.
What were our slots open last year? Like, how do they vary total number last year?
I don't know off the top of my head, I'd have to pull the, I don't have that.
Do you have a general idea of like the percentage of slots filled, potentially to open?
I know I'm asking a specific example. Something last year. Yeah, so the elementary slots typically get just about, just about all of them.
Just awful.
Not so much, because we have so many more slots at the high school, and in secondary, that there's much more competition. So a lot of students will decide that, so PVPA, you just have more competition in high school, and you have Career Tech at.
Does the chart on the previous page give you that information? It tells you by grade last year?
It doesn't tell us seats, though.
No, it doesn't. It just gives you an idea of which grades, grade levels have the higher choices, and distributed across K through 12. But what I don't know is if this is what we need.
It wasn't all last year, so in other words, they're carrying over, do you know what I mean? Like, they're not brand-new seats in FY '18. All those seats were brand-new students.
Just one more question.
Sure.
So I just want to make sure I'm understanding. In grade one for next year, we're going to have six slots open, and the current grade K enrollment is 50?
No, that's where I was mistaken.
Oh, I thought, okay, I thought that was the above.
Oh, no.
Sorry for misunderstanding.
We don't know yet for? Because we don't have the census.
The census back yet.
Correct.
Okay.
So is the motion to determine whether we want to approve 83 slots, that's just a minute? Yeah, I make a motion to do so.
Just a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that's approved. So there's an action right now? So item FY '19 budget update, is that?
Correct.
Are we ready to move on?
Okay. Yeah, so we'll take you through what we think is pretty good news for this stage in the game, remember, you're not voting on budget tonight. There's a specific reason why, what you're looking at right now is what I'm suggesting that I and Heather, if she's available, bring before Finance Subcommittee, and I think that that is scheduled for March 6th. I do, I get a confirmation from David Nixon, but I'm going to assume it is. So we are purposefully trying to wait to have a line item version of the budget, so we have fewer of those floating around that are draft, draft, draft. As Chris and I will jokingly say, we probably, between the two of us, already have 15 drafts for FY '19, easily. So we, as, the more gets nailed down, then it's just easier that we're not creating draft after draft of things that are going to change. Why we feel like it's pretty good news at this stage in the game, although things could change, is you see total budget expenses from FY '18 to FY '19, and with a total budget increase of roughly $104,000, so 1.24% increase, and that does take into consideration all settled contracts. That is a wow for a public school district. Now, you see that the local contribution does get hit harder, because as you notice, we see a decrease in Circuit Breaker, we see a decrease in the 240 grant.
School choice.
Applying less school choice, because there were some things last year when we approved FY '18, like the additional teacher, or sort of things we said we were going to fund through school choice, we're not applying as much school choice. And pre-care revolving didn't go down, 391, that's a grant that's getting phased out. So you see some decreases in grant revenue.
Yeah.
And therefore, the increase on the local contribution is, and also, any increase is going to be a greater percentage increase, because it's a smaller number on local contribution. But that still is, that still is not an alarming number, so that's 100, right now, it's looking like roughly $158,000 as of today for an increase in local contribution, but we will drive home to the Finance Subcommittee that there are a lot of moving parts, there's still a lot of moving parts. So if you go down to the Circuit Breaker projections, the larger graph, right, is, assumes a 65% reimbursement for Circuit Breaker, which to the right, you see if the legislature were to fund at 75%, that would be roughly an additional $30,000, $29,000 in revenue. You see our school choice projections, we base these school choice projections on that number you see in your graph where I said, we took out the seniors, and we took out the seniors in the equation, that's it. So as I mentioned to you, there's 13 queries for school choice, and if you assume that those students don't have any, we don't get any special education increment for those students, you're looking at $57,500, right, in additional school choice funds for, if all those students were to come. What we do know are our collective bargaining agreements settled through FY '21. Remember, in some cases, they look different in FY '19, because there was some wage restructuring, where people were well below the regional averages. We do know that we have one teacher retiring, there could be other personnel changes before the end of the year that could positively or negatively impact the budget, but they could positively. So what we don't know, that Title II A may be discontinued, that would be a $13,000 decrease in revenue, and that would increase the local contribution. Those Circuit Breaker estimates that we talked about, so the cost estimates in special education, those are all based on current IEPs, and any information we have right now about likely placement changes right now. Now, we don't know what may change in terms of team meetings, we don't know if any student moves into the district prior to April 1st, I mean, up to the last day of March, no matter what the placement cost is, they move before April 1st, where they land absorbs all the cost in the budget. Similarly, if they move after April 1st, you hold on to the expense for an entire year after that. And if students are in the custody of the Department of Children and Families, if students are in DCF custody, DCF has the authority to make unilateral placement decisions without consulting a team or the school district, and you can, there are some districts that have a huge set of expenses associated with that. So those are the kinds of things that could change. School choice, this is something that really doesn't factor as much into revenues and expenses, school choice out doesn't come out of the school department budget, but it is something that certainly comes up. You've seen it on the cherry sheet, at Select Board, at Tri-Board, and at Finance Subcommittee. So we talked a little bit about the cherry sheet last time. Those are just estimates. So that, again, if the seniors graduate and no additional students choice out, those are big ifs, that number could be as low as 265, 130. That's important on the town side, I've had this conversation with David, and I'll reiterate it to the Finance Subcommittee, it's certainly not on me to tell them how to make decisions, but it is important for them, before they make any sort of draconian type of cuts, to know that these numbers, a lot could change in these numbers, right? So they, I know that there was a lot of conversation, some of you saw that in that email, ouch, look at the cherry sheet, I wouldn't want people to rush in and start making huge cuts around the cherry sheet, they're just estimates, and they're somewhat, I understand where they come from, but even the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education will say they're a little bit pulled out of thin air. The, in receiving revenues, the same thing. And the charter tuitions, which, this is a town expense, but again, this is because the conversation that you'll hear, which is completely logical, is because there may be expenses or desire to, a desire to build up services in the town, and then this fear about some of these expenses, we just need to be careful, because the estimate listed for next year, that's 769674, and I actually have an email from the Department of Ed that says, you know, it's really not tied to anything. So, I mean, I think they look at, I think, I shouldn't, that was their words of saying, they couldn't point me back to an Excel spreadsheet. Every one of these other numbers, I can go right to an Excel spreadsheet, I don't include those in here, because they have student names and identifying student information, but I have Excel spreadsheets, we have Excel spreadsheets, for all these choice things currently in FY '18, they're very precise and exact. When you go to charter FY '19, I do think the department, or perhaps the governor's office says, well, there's been this steady increase, so it's logical to assume there'll be another increase like the ones they've seen. So that, it's not completely made up, but it's not tied to any specific census.
It's a somewhat logical guess.
Yeah, that's a perfect way of putting it, a logical guess.
Well, somewhat.
So then, you see that if?
Can I just ask, Annie, when they tell us our final numbers, do they have to have a backing, or can they just make something up as well?
No, they always have a backing, so the reason, if you go to the very last paragraph, FY '18 charter enrollments, this is from a worksheet called Q2 Charter Enrollment, that we get from the department, it's in the security portal, because it has identifying information, so we can see exactly who is on it.
Okay.
And we also asked charter schools to tell us every single child that you claim belongs to Hadley and their street address, because we don't want to have issues that some other districts have had with charges and going awry. So FY '18 charter enrollments, this is actual quarter two, this includes four seniors, and those four seniors who are in charter enrollments are costing the town $64,000 for those four students. If those students were to graduate, no additional students enrolled in charter, the FY '19 net cost estimate would be 512,000 or 513,000, which is a far cry from 769674. And for some of the monies that the town is looking for, that's what I say, just, it's early in the process, so just, there's a lot of wait and see that could happen.
Smith Voke is under which category?
Smith Voke is not listed anywhere on here, but Smith Voke's projected tuition for next year is just under 600, do you know?
I can tell you exact in a few seconds.
I'm just curious how much, so I took, for the charter tuitions, for example, I divided the 575,526, that says we net spend, divided by the 47 students, so that's a little over 12,000 students. And that varies, does it?
It does vary. So look at, you can tell that by four seniors, four seniors that have cost $64.
There's $16,000 apiece.
Well, it depends, so, in that charter report I gave you, it showed you that snapshot of different, depending on a student's program, that's the cost associated. So in one case, we have a tuition that's $21,000 for a charter school, a single tuition, just under 21,000. So it depends on the charter school, and it depends on the student.
So to Paul's point, though, it's not just charter tuitions that are unknown, it's also the Chapter 74 CTE tuition that is unknown.
Yeah, so we have budgeted, we are assuming $634,000 based on the 37, so what we don't know, we assume the tuition hadn't, isn't going to change, there's nothing indicating rate restructuring, so we budgeted at an FY '18 tuition, and we also assumed, we always have to make an assumption about the special education costs, because you get a surcharge for students who have an individual education plan, who go to vogue schools, to estimate that.
So is it worth broadening that category to be charter and CTE?
Yeah, second add this.
Charter, CTE, tuitions?
Before we go to?
Yeah, just to, I mean, because we've always historically said, tuitions is unknown, and we've been hit in the past with large increases, so maybe bundling that all together would be helpful.
Yep.
And I'm thrilled to see the collective bargaining agreements all on here, because that's awesome, that these are all settled for at least the next three years, that we know going in.
Yeah. So, I mean, we're hoping the news will continue to improve, I don't think this is, this is actually a very good position to be in this early on, if nothing changed, and you're talking a total operating increase of 1.24, that's certainly nothing to be embarrassed about, particularly given the fact that all contracts are set again. Things could change for the positive, and hopefully, they don't change for the negative. We'll add the CTE information, is there anything else that you think we should add for Finance Committee?
Well, what are the messages we want to convey to them? They're small increase, or, you know, sort of managing their budget well. You know, they're going to ask, well, how did you keep your rate of increase below inflation? It cuts, not backfilling, how is it that it's such a small increase?
We had one retirement that resulted in a pretty substantial savings. Let's see what else, actually, just a couple of movements in the, I forgot the name we called them, it used to be Paris.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. That, you know, again, we have higher paid ones leave, lower-priced ones come on board, so we had that as well. Trying to look at things that came out in the negative on the budget.
As it stands now.
For big numbers, a lot of small ones, but.
Mm-hmm.
The NIASK cost, that was about $20,000 that obviously we won't need this year.
And it also helped, I would say, that our bargaining unit, we say below the rate of inflation, too, actually, for A, the largest bargaining unit, technically, the rate of inflation is about 1.6, and, you know, so it's the largest unit has an increase, I call it, it's awesome.
Yep, some textbook accounts that, you know, again, won't be utilized this year that were last year.
So we're managing our budget tightly, really, the increase just? Really the increase we see is due to a decrease of state dollars, state and federal dollars.
So as these revenues go down, that's always the challenge. And I did ask the question that was brought up last time, Paul, you'd asked, is this new money, the Special Education Stabilization Fund, I'm thinking of it now, is that the goodness? This is new money. And I asked that question when I was at Tri Board, I think. David stated that at this point, he was thinking that it would just be a transfer of money that's in existing, the existing stabilization count and creating a new stabilization account, account on the town side.
The existing stabilization count is the one that we have here in the school budget or the town's?
The town's. On the town side.
So they're offering to carve out a new account using town funds to populate dollars?
So what I put in your packet last time was what David presented to Tri Board at the last Tri Board meeting. And they're, they didn't have a long, in-depth conversation about it. So I don't want to say that, I think David has proposed this for consideration. I can't tell you what the select board's opinion is on it right now. And it wasn't discussed in detail, just as I had included in your packet. He included it in the packet for the select board. They didn't go into any great discussion about it. So I don't have a sense of, of the opinions of each of the board members that are, what their recommendations would be.
Okay, so there's no action on this, but this is.
No, it's just the, yeah, giving the feedback to include the CTE information. Paul, I do think it is that the, I think this represents good management of funds. And we're trying to address the things, as you saw earlier this evening, we're actively attempting to turn things around in terms of choice. And even chartered Northampton, Northampton School Committee is meeting tomorrow, but we are looking to move ahead with the idea that I mentioned to you, that we may also be able to collaborate with Northampton around it on being able to allow students with their, who have studied Chinese to maintain their language fluency by using technology to participate in courses surrounding campuses that have been able to add Chinese.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Okay, last presentation discussion item, feedback informative evaluation superintendent. So you have in the packet here Annie's goals, which we had discussed at our previous meeting as being linked from coming out of your evaluation. And those are tied to the standards of effective practice that you see here, standards one through four. So really, it's a question of if there's any comments or feedback on these goals for moving forward in terms of implementing them.
Yeah, and also it's not changing the goals. It's really what would be helpful to me. I don't, I don't need or require any sort of formal vote or any sort of formal vote. But any, any discussion of my professional competence or performance always has to be done publicly and in an open session. I don't know, unless you're really getting ready to take me to the workshop, then there's a whole bunch of other rules for that. But general, general conversation about performance and performance evaluation always has to be done in an open session and in public. And so my question would simply be, if you have any questions about if I am or what sort of progress is being made on these goals, or if you have any concerns, I would love to hear them. And some of these, for example, the first goal, the kinds of things that we discussed me doing, actively participating in town department meetings, that's continuing collaborating with all town departments. That has been ongoing all year. I have participated in all of the professional groups that you see listed there. The updating and revising our district strategy and action plan. So you have right now, school improvement plans that are aligned to the existing strategy document. And we're looking to have a retreat in which you build a new three-year plan. We are doing a lot of work around student achievement and student progress data. You've seen a lot of that data that's come before you. And we are revising the curriculum in middle school mathematics. You saw that that's also on Bryan's School Improvement Plan. And we're continuing to work on elementary writing, the Makerspace models. We've done a very fine job of integrating those at Hadley Elementary. And as you've seen in St. Simmons class, and we also have somebody from the University of Massachusetts coming in to do professional development on April 10th with Hopkins Academy faculty on 3D printing. You've seen DIBELS and FAST data. We have been actively participating in CE's social justice initiatives. They've asked me to present at their social justice conference on March 10th. That's coming up. And the key enhancements to improve family and community engagement. So I've met with both chiefs, chief of police and the fire chief, and some graduate students at UMass Amherst in nursing are helping us get our planning underway for a parent and community forum around how do we help our students, our kids be resilient? How do we keep them safe? How do we identify risks and threats and mitigate those and promote resiliency? And the school committee development administration of the family and community survey, I guess just after I touch on Goal 5, I'll circle back to that. Goal 5 also brings data, refers to data. And as I've said, I participate in data team meetings and we are doing a lot of work with data. James Levine and Associates has done a year-long program on trauma-informed instruction and interventions. For interested faculty, we've had a lot of faculty participate in that. We did complete the NIASK self-study. And we have monthly coaching and supervision for mental health and behavioral support staff through Jim Levine and Associates. And just had a data and curriculum planning meeting with Hadley Elementary educators today after school with our K-1 educators. The community survey is something that typically, I say, supporting you all. This is something the school committee has done every other year. And I did put, Hugh Merron and Heather, I think I connected you to the co-chair of CPAC because they also are interested in collecting some data. So anything that I can do to be of assistance, I'm happy to do that if the school committee wants to go ahead and do a family and community survey again this year.
Yeah, so I'm wondering if after this meeting, what I can do is ask each of you to reach out to me individually if you're interested in being part of that group of usually two, so we don't have a quorum. It's oftentimes taking the last year's, last survey that we did, reviewing it as kind of a first pass-through with any suggested additional questions, either coming from the connection to CPAC or current, you know, more current questions that might be more relevant topics to add, and calling it back if we feel like there's any kind of duplication because we don't want survey fatigue. Getting that read through and approved here, and then just having really a timeline of getting it out the door. And I think in the past, we've had a parent volunteer to help crunch some of the data and interpret it.
And finding that parent volunteer is a part of the task.
Yes.
To individuals.
Appointing, recommending a parent to volunteer to help us. But yeah, it's always a good opportunity to get kind of a pulse of, you know, how folks are feeling. The open response questions are usually, you know, very helpful in interpreting. Yeah, kind of where, what's on people's minds in terms of the different open response, not just the scale of survey questions. So I'll do that, I'll send out, so individually you can let me know, then we can assemble our two people and talk about the reality of getting it done before the end of the school year.
That sounds great. How, when would we need to have it in order for it to make a, be factored into our goals revision process? And.
So the retreat.
Evaluation process and all of those, timing of those things. So realistically, I would say that we're likely to get the retreat sorted out closer to the end of the school year or the close of the school year. So you'd think of yourself as having to the end of the school year, that's your window to get feedback from parents.
So maybe we aim for results in end of May into June. At least we're not, we're not starting from scratch here. We've got two prior robust surveys. And I think if anything, it's a matter of scaling it back potentially. Yeah, because there were a lot of questions. And making sure that we've attended to anything new and emerging that meets the need of it.
Yes, I think it is really doable. I do think that you have great questions and we said about scaling it back. I do recall the feedback. Several of the questions, parents kind of said, because you modeled it on the conditions for school effectiveness, the CSE indicators, those are great indicators. A lot of those questions have to do with classroom instruction, curriculum things that some parents said, I have no idea. I just, I couldn't tell you.
I mean, and to see that the state even values that because what mechanisms are there for parents to learn? The details of Common Core and what happens in the classroom. So that first year, our survey was pretty enormous. And the second year scaled up back substantially. And this year, we have the opportunity, a great opportunity to scale it back even more.
Great. One other question prompted me to think about was when we met with police and fire a while back about having an executive session to go over their safety items and priorities.
Yeah, so our initial plan had been that was actually going to happen in this, at this meeting here. We, some other things have kind of gotten their attention, so I anticipate they will be here in March. But we met with them. And so to give, to bring you up to speed on what their recommendations were, we just need to do that in executive session because there's school and safety. But we have already met with them and we have progress on, we prioritize things and there are many things that are completed.
Okay, so, but should we think about planning on that for March?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
I just, yeah, I just have to move it.
Annie, for the report you just gave, thanks for making sure we said the word DIBELS.
Yeah, that was for you.
I was afraid we'd go the whole evening.
And if we're not using DIBELS next year, I'll still refer back to it. I remember when we used to.
Okay, all right, that's everything for presentations and discussions. Personnel report?
You have it in your packet, there's very little to report. A resignation, a new hire for that same position and a couple of long-term subs.
Okay. Public comment? Crickets. All right, business manager report, including your additional item on pre-K tuition.
Okay. Actually, before we do that, I just wanted to let you know that the air conditioning bids, we have two already in for the electrical part of it. They're not due until Wednesday of next week. And then the, that's the electrical subbid. And then the following week is the air conditioning portion of it. I do have to say that based on, we had a walkthrough with all of the prospective vendors last Wednesday, I believe. And from what I heard from them, this is just a project that's going to have to be done in the summertime, apparently. And I was shocked to hear this, but it's basically a two-month project. So it's not something where they could just get, you know, some large crews in and get it done in a week during vacation time. So, you know, just, just so you're aware, it will definitely be a summer project. Hopefully, you know, the bids will come in with that, you know, now they don't have to clean up and put everything back together every day like they would have had to if they did it during the school year. We're hoping that we can get the entire school done, but if not, we do have the option to just get a couple of the wings done. So either way, part of that school will be air-conditioned by the flaws.
Good job, thank you.
And then we can just jump right into the reports where we have first expense report. So I have started to move some of the expenses out. We had some rather substantial shortfalls, I guess, shall we say, in certain accounts. And I moved some of those out into grants and circuit breaker. I still have some additional movement into the circuit breaker account from one of the spent tuition accounts to make. And where are the tuition accounts? And the movement of some budget money from one account into one of the spent tuition accounts that will pretty much wipe out that particular shortfall. So page seven, oh, not eight, okay, thank you very much. So yeah, I think we were, in the tuition to non-public schools, we were at minus 375 last month. So, and that will come down again. And the payment to collaborative programs, I believe, were about 139 minus last month. And we're down to 83, that'll be down to about eight or so, if not zero next month. So I just wanted to kind of give you guys the update on that, that transfers are being done.
We're at 76%. We're going to pay nine grant total, 76% use. And we feel like we're on target, you know, kind of meeting the mark here or any, any areas of concern?
No, because in that 76%, you know, there's a lot of encumbrances of, you know, certainly the tuitions, the transportation. All of that is already encumbered for, so that's included in the 76% spent.
Encumbered for the entire.
For the whole year.
Right, and we also have some additional school choice money, obviously, that was in the budget that we have not utilized yet. So we have that as well. So no, I'm not, I'm not overly concerned at this point in time. Pretty much the year is, it's not 76% over, but it's close. Grant report, so you can see with the grants, a couple of them have been fully spent now. The 240 spent education, our special ed grant. You can see, obviously, last month that was considerably less, but I moved the tuitions into that to utilize that. Circuit breaker, we have still $206,000. I won't be using all of that money this year. We'd like to carry some over into next year. And that, that was showing that we wanted to carry about $135,000 over into next year. So, you know, we have, say, $70,000 left to spend in that account. Like the 262 grant, that's a simple transfer that pays for a pre-K ESP position. And what we will do is just transfer the expenses over and utilize all of those. The rest of these, the Title I, certainly, we pay for one teacher and part of the, one of the psychologist salaries. That'll continue to just come down every week. The 391 grant at the bottom, and I guess I could dovetail right into the pre-K tuition discussion from this. That paid for, at one point in time, it paid for the entire salary of the pre-K director as well as part of another teacher's salary. Then it kind of moved down, moved down, and of course, while the grant's moving down, salaries are moving up. So then it was, well, it covers most of the pre-K director's salary. And now they're phasing it out to the point of where, two years ago, it was 61,000. This year, it's 45. And next year, we're anticipating 30, and the year after that, it's, it's gone. So as a result of that, that really puts a lot of pressure on the pre-K program. So I did speak with Lauren Winner this afternoon about that. And the need basically to somehow make up this money because, you know, what's not paid for either with the tuition for the preschool program or with this grant would come out of the school budget. And as things get squeezed in the school budget, that becomes more and more difficult to actually maintain the program. We don't want to offset those funds to a great deal with the, with the school budget. So we just kind of tossed around some numbers to, to talk about for an increase in the tuition. We were looking at what would be a 5% increase in the tuition, which turns out to be about a quarter an hour. When I spoke with, with Lauren this afternoon, basically what they're charging right now, and it's an incredibly difficult tuition scale to discuss because they have rates for one day a week half-day and one day a week full-day. And then it just goes up until you're out of the way to five full-days. And then they have halftime and full-time out-of-town kind of supplemental fees that are charged. So all of those come into play as well. So it's not the easiest thing to just say, wow, we can just do this much money. But all of them are, are based around the fact that they are charging five dollars and fifty cents an hour for their services. And as, as Lauren told me, that's what she pays for daycare for one of her children that's too young to, to attend the program yet. So, you know, obviously, there's certainly a considerable amount of value to a pre-K program. And so she thought that, you know, certainly, something that would increase it by that much wouldn't, wouldn't, you know, become too much of a hardship on the families that utilize it, but yet will go a long way towards offsetting, you know, some of these grant monies that were lost. And that's something that obviously we need your approval on. So I, you know, if you.
Can you remind me why, so we approve what their annual tuition is?
You approve basically what, if there's an increase, you would approve the amount of the increase.
And the five percent increase, would that just be for this year to offset the lower grant? Whereas a year from now, we may be looking at a, another bump because the grant may go away?
The grant is definitely going away, yeah.
Okay.
And, and, you know, the thought when I spoke with Lauren this afternoon was that, you know, just like everything else, I mean, prices go up every year. And she said what had happened was we would go five years without raising the rate and then we'd raise it, you know, not a huge amount, but where people would go, wow, you know, we didn't expect that. And she said, what, what might make more sense really is to just have the price go up a certain percentage every year. She said that way, you know, we would certainly keep pace with inflation on the salaries and, you know, materials that they utilize. And it allows parents to more or less budget for it, you know, for lack of a better term. You know, a five percent increase, if you went five days a week, full days, would be an increase of about two hundred and seventy-five dollars a year. So it's not, you know, I mean, that's, it's a ten-month year, so it's, you know, it's twenty-seven fifty a month, basically. So it's not, again, a huge amount. It's, it's one of those things where times the number of kids, that's where it starts to make a difference.
But it will cover us, so five percent will cover the gap?
Well, it, it won't cover the gap.
No.
As, as with a lot of things, you have that fine line of, you know, you don't want, you don't want to charge too much because then people wouldn't be able to afford to come or would just say, you know, there are alternatives. I won't send my child to a pre-K, I'll send him to daycare. So it's one of those things that we have to kind of work toward covering the gap rather than doing it in one fell swoop. It's almost, it's similar to the school lunch program where, you know, that, that's, it loses money. Well, we could raise the price so that it would, you know, not necessarily make money, but certainly break even. But then you'd end up serving to half the number of kids, you know, so.
And if we don't have a pre-K program, we will pick up pre-K tuitions for students who are eligible for those services. So from ages three to five, we're, we have to provide students who are eligible for those services. We have to, we have to provide that. So that's part of the, we certainly want a viable, we love our preschool, we're very proud of it. And we want a viable program because if we didn't have one, we would make it up on the tuition end of things, tuition plus transportation.
And then in addition, what I found was that the fact that we have a pre-K program and one that's accessible to students from outside Hadley, it was always sort of a good, oh, I haven't considered Hadley, and I really like it here, so maybe my child will stay.
Yeah, right, absolutely.
So how much does the five percent close the gap for next year?
Well, we're, for next year, the five percent, and, and again, it's difficult to calculate with the pay scale, but it looks to, to recover around thirteen thousand dollars of the shortfall, which, you know, for next year would, would pretty much, I mean, it's close. We're, we're losing about fifteen thousand, so it's, you know, it's close to making up that shortfall anyway. The good news is that there is money in the revolving account for the pre-K program. Not nearly as much as there was, say, you know, six or seven years ago, but it's still a fairly healthy balance. And quite honestly, they're, they're pretty much holding their own in it. It doesn't, in fact, it's on the revolving account report. It's not dropping by, you know, forty, fifty thousand dollars a year, which is certainly good.
So Chris, if the five percent gets us an extra thirteen, then next year, you'd have to raise it ten, eleven percent to offset the thirty dollars.
Well, at, at that point in time, it, I guess we'd have to really just take a good, hard look at it. Certainly get your feedback as well as to what, you know, how you wanted to handle this. Again, it's just one of those things that it's very hard. Once those grant monies disappear, it, that really, that helped to, you know, sustain the program for quite some time. I mean, you know, the value of a pre-K program, of course, is, it's difficult to measure, but any of the kids that attend that and then remain at Hadley Elementary, you know, I mean, they've, they've gotten teaching, basically, you know, for two years prior to kindergarten. They also know the building, they know the people. So when they, when they jump from that into kindergarten, you know, for lack of a better term, they're veterans of that school already. You know, they're upperclassmen. You know, they, they've been around for two years, so, you know. And, and what happens is they, they do better as a result of that, quite honestly, because there's not that harsh transition from, you know, wherever they were to the elementary school, you know, so. Just, you know, just laying out to, to you the financial facts, basically. And at some point in time, you know, we'll have to just look at, look at everything, number of students we have, number of positions we have, and, you know, see what can be done there, but.
And correct me if I'm wrong, though, Chris, when we look at that budget summary, right? And so the budget summary document does not, so it assumes the decrease of the fourteen thousand dollars.
Right.
And it doesn't assume that the additional revenue has been added.
No.
So technically, and we still are in very good shape. I would, I would argue that in order to avoid a ten percent increase next year, this remains as it is, that, that any additional revenues go into revolving so that the only increase that's required would be something similar. Do you see what I'm saying? So you don't have to make up thirty, then you have to make up fifteen.
Right. And I don't know what purview we have over the messaging associated with the tuition increase, but it seems like this is a known quantity that is going away. So whatever can be communicated about, this grant is decreasing in funding next year and disappearing after that.
Yeah.
So it's not, this may not be a one-time increase. There may be a future. I don't know. I feel like parents would appreciate hearing that, just, we know that this is coming. We just don't know what the, the scope, you know, what the magnitude of the increase may be in the next.
Right. In that messaging, you'd also want to tout the benefits of the pre-K program.
Yeah. The advertising of the program, just thinking like long-term longevity of the school in general. As Chris said, it's, you know, it's really helping kids get used to it. They've got an upper hand. They've been in the preschool, they transition, they're comfortable, they're going to do better in school. You know, it seems to me pretty logical that we don't, we don't want to see that preschool program gone. So just thinking long-term, it's the school committee, how we can consider promoting and advertising our, as young as our pre-K. If we even, if we have the.
I think it makes sense to do.
Yeah. Just knowing the stance and the future of the district in general, starting really early.
Absolutely.
And it's a great program. So the revolving account for preschool, the dollars that we see here, is all of that from tuition? Or can you tell, like, where does this come from and where, and how is it used?
This is all the tuition money.
Yeah.
You know, the grant money does not go into this account. It's kept separately.
Okay.
So what this tuition account pays for is basically all of the staff and any materials that she buys. Not necessarily paper, you know, things like that where obviously she goes down to the office and grabs paper. But, you know, things like snacks or, you know, particular items associated just with the preschool program, that would come out of there as well.
So at the end of this fiscal year, where would we anticipate that revolving account being? Is that, Annie, what you were saying is connected to the pre-K revolving under budget?
No. What I was saying is connected to it is where you go down to the three ninety-one grant.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So that, that's where I was connecting it.
Okay.
Three ninety-one grant.
So we're looking at.
That might not putting that fourteen thousand dollars back in, then, then we avoid, or we say it's a ten percent next year, right?
Yep.
We're looking at about eighty-one, eighty-one-five in the account right now. We have that three thousand, six hundred and something dollars for the two sixty-two grant that we're going to transfer the expenses out of the preschool. So that's actually going to raise the balance by that much money and bring it back up, you know, to say eighty-five thousand. I would anticipate that it would remain right around that dollar amount until the end of the year.
So that's.
Yeah, well, that's, that will be with next year's. And then next year, we're going to utilize a pretty decent portion of that. And it would be, we get about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in revenues.
Added to your ending balance.
So we, yeah, so we, we'd end up using, you know, half of that next year.
I see. Okay.
This is all before any kind of increase, of course.
Right, right. So even though it shows that large change, I'm going back to the budget summary for FY nineteen where you were showing that it's going to be one fifty-six of income, of revenue for FY nineteen. We're saying it's also, the grant is decreased and are, is there a goal to leave a certain balance at the end of each year in that revolving account?
Well, the goal would be to try to keep it within, say, my screen keeps shutting down, between ten and twenty thousand dollars less than what you started the year at, but again, I just, you know, I can't say how sustainable that is. My, my guess would be that at the end of next year, we'd be looking more at a forty to fifty thousand dollar balance.
So is it clear that, that there's a spend on that? Like, that, that's the part I just want to make sure is not misinterpreted as somebody saying this as, well, it's making a lot more, it's making twice as much in FY nineteen, the pre-K revolving account.
Yeah, it's not, it's not really making twice as much.
Yeah.
We're spending twice as much, I guess. Yeah, I know, they're, they're called revenues. Really, it's not necessarily revenues because, you know, we've got eighty-two thousand dollars sitting in the account right now. So it's, it, it's not just spending your earnings, you're also spending some of your savings as well, more or less.
Okay. As student size, do you get an idea from Lauren at all of the student size, like their enrollment sizes?
Next year, we don't have the census data yet.
In general, like over the years, though, like have they been declining? I know that we've always talked about for a great.
I mean, last year, I didn't feel like there were any significant, well, I take that back. I mean, part of, we have this problem with declining enrollment overall. So I take that back. There was a time, I believe, in Hadley, long before I was here, where you actually had three pre-K classrooms, if I'm not mistaken. So certainly it has declined because you have one fewer classroom overall. But in the years, in the four years that I've been here, it hasn't, we haven't seen huge swings.
And we take kids outside of Hadley.
Mm-hmm. We do.
So can we add this in, we know, I, I'm just wondering if this is a good bullet to just put in there that we know that this grant is going away in two years.
Mm-hmm.
And as a result, you know, we're recommending, or we're supporting a tuition increase.
Maybe I'll just have to give the tuition increase that I agreed to.
Right.
I got that with lunch, Chris, come on.
What's that?
What happened with the lunch?
You put the caviar in there.
Do we need to vote to approve the increase?
Yes, and you do. And if you have a child that attends a program, you need to abstain from the vote. Because if you, if you have a vested interest in, in the cost of the program, you need to abstain.
Okay, so are we in agreement that five percent, the recommendation as, as proposed and agreed to as being reasonable from the director? Does that make sense for this fiscal year?
And do you want that framed in a dollar amount as five seventy-five?
I, I think it's better to probably just say five percent increase.
Oh, five percent.
That way I could apply it also to the out-of-town additional amount that they are charged.
So is there a motion to approve a five percent increase to preschool tuition for fiscal year nineteen?
Yes. So moved.
Okay, second. All in favor? I and one abstention.
So now onto the lunch, yes.
Come on.
I really wanted this month to be the month where we went back up.
Very close.
And actually, I went to the town hall and, and I said, you know, where are those revenues posted? Yeah, I know, she's just rubbing her hands over there.
I gotta tell you, I'd be embarrassed if I were you. I mean, I'd be, I wouldn't have shown up tonight. Thirty-four bucks, I wouldn't be here.
And, and you know what happened, really, I, because I asked Linda at the town hall, hey, can we, can we post these revenues? And they haven't even come from the state yet for January, which, when was I there, last Wednesday? So it just, it wasn't even on the vendor web, which is the site I go to to see all the payments that come to the town. And it wasn't even on there yet. So they're just, they're a little slow.
Why does the athletic go down over that?
We have the scoreboard in the gym that the revolving account paid for.
Okay.
And that was really that big drop of, say, eleven thousand dollars.
And then it goes up as revenue from the games comes in?
Yes.
Yes, as the game money comes in. And, and remember this year, we're also paying for after-school supervision for students who stay and aren't studying. And we're paying the athletic involvement.
So just a question, because I forget, athletic, that amount, is that different than the boosters?
Absolutely.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, the boosters are an entirely separate organization.
That's the money.
Okay.
The regenerates that money, but we don't account.
We don't, yeah, no, account it.
It's the same with a PTO or something like that, same type of thing.
Anything else, Chris?
I have one other item here, which I'm sorry, it's not on the agenda. It was just some housekeeping with some student activity accounts. I have a copy of the policy here as well. The school committee policy says that after three years from the date of graduation, the class accounts must be closed. And we have some here that basically are inactive. D has reached out to the, I forgot if it was treasurer or class president, one or the other, and have been unable to get those accounts closed. So per policy, they have to go just into the general student activity account. And then we just have a few other accounts, worse student activity accounts that are just no longer being used. The last time any of these were used was June of two thousand and thirteen, and that was only because they moved when TD Bank closed and they moved to East Hampton Savings. So that, that was literally the use in June thirteen was moving the account. So I mean, it's been years. Basically, it, I'm trying to look here, it comes to, we're, we're holding off on one of them because she's been emailing back and forth. So it looks like it's around, say, forty-three hundred dollars total. And that, I think it says that we need the school committee to approve that. Yes, it says upon approval of the school committee.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's the, the closing of any student activity fund, the prize approval of the school committee. And so do you want to list the, the ones that are being closed?
I can't, sure. Class of two thousand and six, do you want the dollar amounts too?
They don't have to approve the dollar amount.
Will this go into the public record, the packet, the sheet?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. A hundred and twenty-five dollars. Class of two thousand and eleven was one thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars and thirty-five cents. Class of two thousand and twelve, six hundred and fifty-three dollars and thirty-seven cents. Then we have a health student activity account, four ninety-four, sixty-eight. We have industrial arts, two eighty-five, seventy. Publications, six eighty-eight, forty-seven. We have just one called Other, forty-four, fifty-nine.
It was the Other Club. It's widely popular.
And publications isn't your book?
No, no. Technology, fifty dollars. And VHS, one thirty-two, forty-eight.
Holds up.
It's, it's, I guess the Beta Club is still functioning. And yeah, so that, it, it comes to around forty-three hundred dollars. This, the class of two thousand and thirteen is also in there worth eighteen hundred and eighty-one dollars. So the total is sixty-one hundred dollars, so about forty-three hundred.
How long do we have to hold on to them before they can be?
Three years.
Three years.
And they're inactive for three years. We should vote them to close them. And the money then goes to the general student activity fund and the kinds of things we would use for that. For example, right now, we have student activity clubs that don't do a lot of revenue raising, some of the gender equity work. The Key Club just started. Also, that would be a place where you could look for scholarship funds for students for activities they couldn't afford. The only thing is it has to remain, it can only be used for the benefit of students directly. So we can't move it into operating costs or it has to go to students, something that benefits students.
Is there a motion to move these dollars as proposed? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Thank you.
Do you need a...
I don't need that.
Okay, we ready to move to school committee reports and discussion, negotiations, Tara?
So hopefully we will finish up today.
We're ready to do the exec session and talk about that, okay? That will be it. Policy, social media acceptable use, final reading?
Yeah, so this is the second, it was in your packet last week, last week, last month, and so this would be the second reading, as I said, already reviewed by the attorney.
Were there any recommended revisions or questions to the social media acceptable use policy?
No, but just a comment that I missed last meeting, and I'm, I have to admit, this is the first time I'm actually seeing it, and I think it's a great, a great set of training rules for responsible use by students overseen by advisors, and for other students to sort of bear witness to what that kind of responsible use looks like, so, this is great and cool.
Good, so we do need a vote?
I just wanna say, my only recommendation, I believe I brought this up last time, and it doesn't have to be in, it doesn't have to be part of this policy, but just to incorporate some form of comment policy on any accounts that are brought, that are put forward, so that you, that that would guide the comments that people are, like, leaving on these accounts.
Okay. And whether you allow comments or not allow?
And, like, and, like, what can be, what, what, what is allowed in the comments to try to, to, to try mainly, to try to deter any form of bullying, derogatory or parrot's vulgarity, that kind of stuff.
Is that, that's perfect, I feel like there is something about the, that goes, when you go to the, like, the student accounts on Instagram, there's something to the effect of, I feel like there's something there that says, you know, the moderator has the right to take something away. The unacceptable use part, engage in cyberbullying, threatening behavior harassment, or disrespectful contact towards others, or use of language online that would be unacceptable in the school community, I think we're trying to get a little bit of that as kind of a catch-all, if you couldn't say in school, you can't say it online.
But, the thing, like, when I read this, and perhaps I'm just reading it, I'm reading it improperly, I'm reading this as the, as, this is what's gonna guide the people that pull the creators of the account.
Creators of the account.
This isn't gonna guide the public that are telling them the accounts.
I'm with you, okay, all right, yes, I will, you did bring that up, I, I'm sorry it's not in here, I don't know, to your point, that it would be, because, yes, we will address that, I don't know if it'd be in a policy, 'cause I don't have any authority over, right, you're right, this is about the students in here, I can enforce this, but we do have to communicate.
We don't have authority over what people post, but we do have authority over their reaction to it, and, right, exactly, their tolerance policy for...
Right, 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 so we certainly have the authority to take it down, and making that clear to people.
Yeah, so I would just, I would just, I would just encourage whatever accounts are created, to include language, like, as you include language like that.
Absolutely. So this would be, if people are ready.
So with that, with that addition, otherwise, were there any other recommendations or feedback on the policy? Okay.
And so just to be clear, I'm, I'm not changing the language here, I'm gonna direct people procedurally that they have to account for that, and make it clear to the public that we can take down any posts or...
That'd be my recommendation.
Okay, all right.
Is there a motion?
Motion to adopt the social media policy.
Second, second, all in favor? Aye. Great, and otherwise, I think we also have another policy meeting coming up in March, rescheduled.
Just a third...
And I did speak with Travis with the CES for that, with, with that tool, I don't know if that's something that I should address here, or if it's something that I should address with you offline, or, I don't know about that.
Sure.
So, well, so basically, that, that tool that you brought for last week, or last, last month, their idea for this tool would be for, for social media posting, its main benefit would be if it's something that would, if, if you'd be managing more than one salve account, so if you were managing, like, a Facebook and a, and a Twitter, so you could post one thing to both accounts, but also, it would bring in those text messages to parents and robo calls and stuff like that, so, kind of the stuff that I believe we already have through school grade, so it seems to me at this point that we'd be better off not adopting that, that tool, and just work natively within whatever social media, which we would be pursuing as a district.
So, and you made that point last time, pick one and use it, and then my recommendation would be, I'd have to, perhaps, if the school committee is comfortable with this, that I can speak with you more, Keith, around some ideas, I know, I know what my limits are, just in terms of time and management, so I, I would want to identify something that, at the start, allows information to get out, in a way other than email, but that doesn't require me to manage a bunch of content, comments, and I, I just, there's no way I could do that.
And we could, I'd like to spend time with you, so we can try to come together, come up with some form of, at least skeleton of the social media event for the district, and then maybe bring that up to school veneer, whatever we'd have to do for that stuff.
That'd be great, if folks are comfortable with that.
Definitely, I'm glad that's an area of your expertise.
Yeah, two areas of his expertise, okay? Keep the superintendent out of trouble.
All right, finance tri board, so we're gonna be meeting March 6th to present the proposed budget.
Yep.
FY19 plan, but otherwise, were there any other updates, outcomes from recent meetings on finance for tri board?
I was at the last one, as I told you, the, just that discussion about the special stabilization fund, I asked that question, and, and then FinCom is going to meet with every single department.
Right, okay, so as far as pursuing the special ed stabilization fund, is that something that we should discuss with the FinCom group, and, I mean, is this something that...
I would imagine that at all, no, I would imagine at all tri board meetings going forward, it has a placeholder.
Okay.
It has a placeholder as a warrant article, I would imagine at future tri board meetings that they're going to go through the warrant articles one by one.
Yes.
And then they won't make a final vote on what goes on, the warrant pertaining to the schools without input from the school committee, so my expectation is that there'll be a discussion at all of March, yeah, the tri board meetings.
Okay, so assuming there's a discussion at the next tri board meeting, we can get a summary out to you guys of the, the definition of what they're looking to do, where that's coming from, and how that would impact us, so that we can make a educated decision about moving forward.
And if it is something that requires, so I don't think that it, you could make sure that you vote by your April meeting, 'cause the warrant is that, that first week in May, so you could certainly make sure you vote your opinion on whether or not you support it, but, you know, technically, so you could do that, if you didn't do that, it wouldn't matter, because the warrant article says you have to vote it anyway, so, you do it before, if you didn't vote it, it just wouldn't come to fruition.
Okay, okay, Fields.
We're...
Haven't we built yet?
Yes, next week, we've started with some fundraising to local businesses, and...
Thank you to East Hampton Savings Bank, what appears to be that they, they are willing to discuss a donation of $5,000 at this point.
Terrific.
That's awesome.
Thank you to Eric and Annie and Dr. Baze, Ryan Mac, for keeping that connection, and we're still working on the private donation campaign, there's some work that's not quite ready to have it fully unveiled with online giving and signing upfront, but soon, Annie and Eric and I are talking about meeting a little later. So we're still looking to, for fundraising to make up the amount needed to do the first phase.
Excellent, okay, and Hamara, the CES.
Yeah, so I went to the January meeting and shared with you all the report, the executive directors' report to the board of directors, thank you, Annie, for adding it to the packet. I wanted to highlight one specific, highlight of the meeting, that a part of the, of the meeting that I was especially proud of Hadley, they had their SPIFI person giving a report about SPIFI data in the region, and an amazing, amazing report, an amazing report on, on vaping, and some of the statistics that are coming out about e-cigarettes and use of vaping, students apparently are, you know, in high numbers saying absolutely not that they smoke a cigarette, but would they vape, yeah, 45% of them have vaped, in the broader region, which is an astonishingly high number, it was a pretty amazing presentation, I highly recommend, we find some way of getting that information in front of the, in front of the school committee.
Okay.
Is through perhaps Renee's next presentation, but the immediately, you know, the question that immediately followed from this very large CES board was, is there any reason why a superintendent wouldn't bring this data forward to their school committee, and I was very proud that it's not the case here, we brought it year after year, we make informed decisions based on the data that advise how we manage our health program, and also the way in which our superintendent communicates weekly about matters of social emotional health and wellness, and, so it was a point of pride, thank you.
Thank you.
So that's all I have to say.
I, I have to say this, thank you very much for that comment, and I'm thinking, my goodness, if Big Tobacco can figure out how to continue to sell Big Tobacco, I have got to be able to figure out how to sell Hawkins Academy, I mean, that's... Geez, this is actually a good place, it's healthy and helpful.
That's right. All we've come with SPIFI endables.
I know, I noticed that. I was pretty sure that was an adjective.
Yeah.
He was...
That's great, okay, so Ash and I, we have a couple left.
So the first one, you abstain from.
Yeah, so I'll abstain from the cash payable warrants, but do we have a motion for approval of the AP warrant submitted in February 2018?
Sued.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain, okay, approval of the January 25th, 2018 minutes, any questions, revisions, concerns on those minutes? Okay, is there a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes, January 25th.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, approval of warrants submitted in February 2018, is there a motion?
So...
Seconded.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We gave the second reading, social media, we approved the field trip, and we approved the number of school choice slots. Okay, so, next regular meeting date would be once?
3/26, is that right, 3/25?
Well, it's here.
26.
One, two, three, four, 26, March 26th, any concerns, conflicts?
March 26th, you said?
Yeah. Right, fourth, Friday, Sunday? Okay.
5:30.
We'll plan on 5:30, sounds like we're gonna try to do an exec session if we can, with TS Lees and Orin Fire, on school safety items and priorities. Okay, so I just need somebody to motion to enter into executive session, the wording is under number two of the agenda, if you want to read that out loud, we'll do a roll call vote.
Oh, go ahead, chair will entertain a motion to enter executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective negotiations, a motion to move into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, I've determined an open meeting would have detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the whole body, and to reconvene in open session.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Okay, roll call vote, Keith?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
Hamara?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Me? Yes, aye.
We need to reconvene in open session.
'Cause you have to, you have to report the vote out.
Only for that. We will reconvene to report on the vote, we will now move into executive session.
Do we now...
Here we are in open session, the outcome for our audience.
Don't, really, you don't have, we all have to go on.
We have unanimous approval of the negotiations with the Unit D contract, which are the educator service personar, ESPs. That's it.
That's it?
Great.
Okay, yes.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
See you in March.
Thank you everyone.